I want to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners' Court. We're also glad to have you all here in attendance, and if you're tuning in online, welcome. We're glad to have you tuning in remotely. At this time, I would like to welcome Ms. Marta Men. She is going to lead us in our invocation, and then our pledges will be led by Samantha Barnes with our Daughters of the American Revolution Group. So if you'll please stand. I would like to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Bright, sunny, shiny day today, isn't it glorious? Well, we have, instead of me praying, I'm going to have you guys help me pray. So we're going to pray the Lord's Prayer, because I think it's significant when we pray corporately to ask God to help us in all of our decisions and in everything that we do. So let's, if you'll join me in the Lord's Prayer. Father, we thank you that you are our Father in heaven. Halleluyah be your name, come on. Your kingdom come, your will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our debtors as we forgive our debtors. And do not lead us into temptation, but deliver us from the evil one; for yours is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. You know, I'd like for us to do it again. I messed up a couple of times. I mean, it's right here in front of me, and I still messed it up. So will you please, let's do it one more time. It'll only take two minutes. All right. Our Father in heaven, hallelujah be your name. Your kingdom come, and your will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our debts as we forgive our debtors. And do not lead us into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for yours is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. And Father, you have heard this word from this place today, and it goes into every life, every family, every place that this company of people rules and reigns. And so, Lord, we thank you. We're going to see answers, because we have prayed corporately today in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Thank you for it.
Amen. Good job. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Marta. I thought it was great the first time, but I'm all about twice. We could use it twice. And thank you, Samantha. All right. We have four, let's go to item number one, which is public input for items not listed on the agenda, and we have four individuals that have registered to speak, and we'll hear them in order of how they registered. And I will remind everybody that this, we have a three-minute public comment limitation. So we'll go ahead and start with our first one, which is Ms. Mabel DeBrow. And Jody, will you get that microphone and make that easy for Ms. DeBrow, please? Ms. DeBrow, good morning and welcome to the Commissioners' Court. And we have a three-minute time limitation. I'll go ahead and start the timer. Okay, go right ahead.
Have you read her?
Yes, ma'am.
I need to assist her, that's all right. Same three minutes is fine, but I need to help her.
What did he say? Oh, yeah, you can go ahead and help her, sure, Willie, absolutely.
Ms. DeBrow is here with me, and I want her to help all of us understand what was going on in Powell Point when she was a young girl growing up there, and kind of give you an idea of what it's like, what it's like to me when I'm up there at that cemetery. So I wanted to talk to you about that. Ms. DeBrow, how old are you?
How old am I?
Yes.
Nine.
Congratulations.
Eighteen years young. And tell us a little bit about how, what it was like when you went to school.
It was awful, very bad. The roads were very so narrow that couldn't be one car go up and down the road. People, if you were walking, if you were walking and people coming in the car, you had to get off to the side. There were no lights. When we got ready to go to the show, there were no lights. There was a lot of things that should have been done, but it wasn't done. And the graveyard was just in a mess. It was terrible. And people that went there had to park in the street to walk down to get to where we had the body, had to put the body. It was really bad. And I said to myself, if I ever got grown and get out of up there, I was leaving. Up in Powell Point, there were no lights, we had no lights and nothing up there. It was a bad place to live. And I said, well, if I ever get away, I will not be back. And when I got out of school, I did not go back. It was really bad. People had a hard time up there, the black folks. We had a hard time. And there was a lot of things that should have been done that they didn't do. I know they could have done something through the streets. It was a disgrace to the streets. And I'm, you know, it was so bad that I was just really afraid to get out there.
Yeah.
And like I say, dark time come, you better get in the house, because you don't, you couldn't see nothing. And that was one of my problems. I don't really go up in there too much. But it was just really bad. And we had a hard time. People, the black folks, had a hard time. And, you know, being black, we had to all sometime come together, because we couldn't buy, didn't have money to buy what we really needed. And my mother was a very good woman, and she really knew how to make meals and things work, you know, because we didn't have money to buy food that we really needed. So it was just bad. It really was.
Mrs. DeBrow, I would thank you for being here this morning and sharing your experience. Three minutes does not do you justice. And so, you know, I'm glad to have you here, but we would love to have a more in-depth conversation with you, and I'd love to, for our Office of History and Culture here at the county, to do an oral history with you and hear about your life and times and expound on that more. So we would love to do that. I don't have a phone number here or contact information, but if we could get that, Teresa, if you could get that before we leave, I'd love to connect her with our Office of History and Culture. Thank you for being here.
Just so you know, her name, DeBrow.
Ms. DeBrow.
I know it's spelled unusual, but you pronounce it.
D-E-B-E-R-E-A-U-A, DeBrow. DeBrow, uh-huh. Thank you. Thank you for being here this morning. All right. Willie, I have you registered next.
Okay. Next, right?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
The, when I talked to her to get an idea of what it was like, and I asked her several times, well, then, what about the cemetery? What was that like? And she started to explain to me. It was really bad, but it was like, if you ever go there, you'll see that it's, it's just tranquil. You just, I hope I'm saying the right word. It was, it's a pleasant time to be in that area right now. And so I thought, that's a good thing. And I want, I would like the member of those people to be remembered in a, in that way, that it was a good time at one time for them, and we need to remember them and honor their being. So I, I want her to come to kind of give you an idea from her perspective as to how that, how things are going right now. And she said, you know, widows have a problem, or just anybody. You have someone you love, you've been with for a long time, it's just hard when you lose them. And so she's telling me about how that, just her trying to keep things going, and she's just like me, she, and Commissioner Mitchell, we just, God means a lot to her and what she's doing and trying to accomplish. And she's just like Sister Mitchell. And I call her sister because God said we're in the same family, so she's my sister. And we just, we just look to him to help us through things that we go through. I want you to see her son, he's here, and just recognize him as her son. Would you stand so that they can see you? This is her son.
Welcome, glad to have you, thank you.
Okay. And so, and she's a proud, helpful young lady, and she's just willing to do things for me and others and anyone to, to help them along the way. And I thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
And thank you, Ms. DeBrow, for being here. At ninety years old, you could be in the bed laying down sleeping this morning.
That's right.
Thank you.
You have to push the button real hard. There we go. Can you hit? Can you? Is it that button not working?
It just never turns on. He's not paying up. Thank you. Ms. DeBrow, I just wanted to tell you that my favorite aunt was named Mabel, and so I love your name, and thank you so much for being here today.
All right, next is Mary Jackson. Mary Jackson. It looks like Mary. What's that? I have a Mary Jackson registered to speak.
Oh, here she comes, Judge.
Okay, perfect. Good morning. Glad to have you here this morning.
I am here to speak on behalf of the St. John Cemetery in Powell Point. And I need to give my name, where I'm from, and my address.
Yes, ma'am.
I know.
If you'll stick your name and address for the record.
Okay, I'm Mary Jackson from 711, 721 Walcott, which they made me change my address in Powell Point. So, and I'm here this morning to speak on behalf of the area that they've been taking care of, which is a good thing.
Yes.
We have, I have descendants there that I didn't know that I had until a few years back. The cemetery was terrible. As Sister Mabel has said, the cemetery was terrible, because people, a lot of people my age didn't know it was there.
Right.
And once they discovered it, it was, it was just something to know that you had descendants there. But we need to be able to take care of it, and it was, you know, we couldn't go to it because it was locked off. We had to ask the person, could we go, go in the cemetery and visit your loved ones? And who wants to go ask somebody, can you go to the cemetery? Or you want to go through there and do something? But anyway, it was an experience for me, and it's just that I've been through a lot in Powell Point. I went through a lot. I had land that was reversed. Like I said, I was living at 721, all of a sudden I ended up living at 711. I don't understand that yet, how it got moved from one place to the other. And I keep asking them why, and I have a kind of reason why, is because I had a dispute with land, and in order for them to take that land, I had to be moved from somewhere else in order to give me another address for, for that. So I've been through a lot, and.
Sorry to hear that.
I just wanted to let you know that there are some things that go on.
Yes.
In that city.
Yes. Good, well, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Next is Chelsea Stallings.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners, Judge Eads. My name is Chelsea Stallings. I live in Denton, Texas, 76201. I haven't been here in a few weeks since we had the agenda item at the end of March for the St. John Cemetery. I've been working on my doctoral dissertation, so in this time, I've been thinking of how I wanted to respond to that, that Commissioners' Court. But then this past weekend, I also watched the video from last week, and I'm still kind of appalled at what I saw. So I'm still processing thoughts on everything and how I want to respond. There are just two points that I really want to make today. The first that I want to always make sure that we're saying on the record is, the reason that the St. John Cemetery is landlocked today is because of bad practices by Denton County in the 20th century, by fraudulent land transactions that, at this time, we believe inadvertently included the cemetery in other people's property. So the whole reason that it's politicized today is not because of citizens, it's not because of residents, it's certainly not because of the five individuals in front of me, but it is because of Denton County in the 20th century. That needs to be said every time. The other thing that I want to respond to, excuse me, the Director of the Office of History and Culture, she said that you guys have already submitted for an HTC, a Historic Texas Cemetery designation, designation from the Texas Historical Commission. And it really bothers me that this is going through, considering we're trying to give you guys history, where we're proactively giving you a document of what happened to the cemetery, we're asking for access as researchers, and you guys are denying us. I worked for the Office of History and Culture for almost three years. I know the processes of when they're trying to get public input for a historical event such as this or incident. There have been no blog posts, there's no community input, there has not been anything in their newsletters, nothing published, there's nothing come through the DCHC, the Historical Commission. I don't really understand what research they're trying to, to get a historical marker for. During that March 26 Commissioners' Court, it was admitted, both by Peggy Riddle, the Director, and by your attorneys over here, that the 1891 deed record showing the three freedmen who purchased that property, their descendants should be the original owners today. So that's openly admitted, and I don't see that anyone has done any research to try to identify those descendants or any of the descendants of anyone who's interred in the cemetery. So I don't really understand what you guys are doing. I'm going to end it here, because I'm still going to respond more in the future, but I thank you for your time. We'll be here next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have several guests with us today, and I want to be sure that we acknowledge, let's have, we have our, let's go to item 3C, which is approval of a court proclamation recognizing the week of April the 21st to the 27th, 2024 is National Volunteer Week in Denton County, and I'd like to welcome up Samantha Taylor from our Emergency Management Department. Go right ahead. And we got lots of our guests with us today.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Gather around.
Thank you for having us this morning.
And the courtroom relocates.
Awesome. Want to start off by thanking you all for your, I can't speak today, for your support, continued support, and stopping by this morning for our breakfast just to shake hands and actually meet the individuals who do represent Denton County. You mentioned earlier today, we have over a million people, population, and whenever disasters do strike, you know, local government can't expand large enough, fast enough, and, you know, local volunteers dedicate their heart and their passions to step up to the plate to help neighbors, help neighbors helping neighbors, Texans helping Texans. And on people's worst days, a friendly face right there is, you know, able to help them whenever they're in need. We do have various organizations here today, whether it range from our CERT team, Community Emergency Response Team, VOAD, our volunteer organizations aiding in disasters. We have the Medical Reserve Corps with Public Health here. We have Ares, they help us with our communications if anything were to happen on a public safety standpoint, they're our backup, and they do help us with storm spotting. So I do want to offer the floor for anyone to speak up today. There you go. Other than that, it is National Volunteer Week, and we cannot be more grateful for the partnerships we do have in the county and the love that we help share.
Perfect. Did anyone want to make a comment? Go right ahead. Good morning.
Hi, my name is Chaplin T., and I'm with Frontline Chaplain Corps with IFOC. And I just, I'm a newbie with this. And I just, I'm a newbie with this group. But I just want to make mention, um, this VOAD, I'm, I'm a part of several VOADS, but this VOAD is above and beyond any. And the fact that, you know, the, the diverse group that we are, um, you know, it's not a little thing to build the relationships that have been built. It really reflects the leaders here. And I just want to take a minute and just give honor, uh, to the hard work and the dedication. This is no little thing, that a group now has one heart and, uh, and really a unity to go forth in any moment of disaster.
Yeah, good, thank you, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, well, I want to say publicly, um, like we echoed this morning, thank you for, for what you do. As Commissioner Mitchell said, she, she knows she can rest well at night knowing that we have a wonderful staff partnered with wonderful volunteers across the county and all four corners of the county. We are, y'all are mobilized and ready and trained, you know, and you're, and you're, you're volunteers. And, and y'all go out in the worst of the storms and late nights and, and, and help, um, a variety of incidences, you know, that we can't even imagine. You know, I was talking to Bruce last night at a dinner and we were, we were talking about winter, I mean, uh, weather preparedness for this fall, you know, because Mark was talking about the, the weather forecasts and so forth and how we're likely to be responding here locally and potentially across the state, looking at weather projections with hurricane season approaching. And so, um, I, as County Judge can rest well, knowing that, that we have volunteers helping, that are mobilized to help here in our county, but also across the state of Texas, you know, or welcoming evacuees as they come here, as we've done. Denton County has a rich history of, of supporting, um, our fellow Americans as, during times of crisis. And so, um, I just want to thank y'all during this Volunteer Week and I think every week should be Volunteer Week, uh, you know, because it is, it's, y'all volunteering every week. So, uh, anyway, so it's volunteer appreciation year round is, is duly noted and should be extended to y'all. So thank y'all so much. And members, do y'all want to say, do you have any other, do you have any comments? Commissioner Edmondson?
Echoed what the judge says, thank you. You can never have too many people helping. You know, every time we have a disaster or whatever we have in the county, uh, just, you know, we need your help, you know? Everyone know about the Red Cross and all that, but we know about Denton County volunteers and what you do for, to help our citizens when they're in a crisis. So thank you for all you do. I know you have to have a passion to do this, you know? It's like the firemen's and the policemen's. You don't just work just because, you work because you have a passion and you want to help others. You want to make other life better. So thank you for all you do. And we can't thank you enough, but we're going to try this morning with the proclamation that we have. Thank you.
Commissioner Edmondson?
Well, I certainly echo what Commissioner Mitchell has said. And I have to tell you, um, I trust y'all's emails and, and weather updates a whole lot more than I do Pete Delkis or any of the ones on TV. And so I really have gotten spoiled over the past few years getting this from you all. But it's very helpful, it's, it's accurate and it's for us here. It's not just, you know, someplace throughout our great state. So thank you all so much for that, appreciate it.
Very good, anyone else? Are you good? We all appreciate it. All right, let me read this proclamation. This is a court proclamation recognizing National Volunteer Week in Denton County. And whereas volunteerism stands as a pillar of strength in the foundation of a compassionate community promoting goodwill, cooperation, and selflessness. Whereas the committed volunteers and nonprofits within Denton County play a pivotal role in elevating the quality of lives of our residents, dedicating invaluable hours to various causes and organizations. And whereas the far-reaching impact of volunteers extends into the fabric of our communities, bringing about positive change and fostering a sense of social responsibility among individuals and families. Whereas it is essential to acknowledge and honor the selfless contributions of volunteers nurturing a culture of gratitude, appreciation, and sustained community engagement. And whereas National Volunteer Week, recognized from April the twenty-first through April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, presents an opportune moment to express our deepest appreciation for those who generously give their time, skills, and passion to enhance the well-being of Denton County. And now therefore be it resolved that we, the Commissioners Court of Denton County, do hereby proclaim the week of April the twenty-first through April the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, as National Volunteer Week in Denton County. We call upon all residents, businesses, and community organizations to unite in celebration, recognizing the substantial impact of volunteers in Denton County. Let us collectively extend our gratitude to those who selflessly dedicate themselves to service and inspire others to contribute their time and talents for the betterment of our community. Done in open court this the twenty-third day of April, twenty twenty-four, upon a motion by the Chair, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all.
Okay, where am I? Right there. Because I only have my glasses on. Oh, I like this blue pen. Teresa, would you give me some of these?
I sure can. No, it's, you just do that one. And then we'll, we'll pass these others down. Here's them, okay?
Okay.
That's the only one.
Okay, okay.
Come on in. She calling me. Hello, hello. She calling me in. Yeah. I bet, I wish I had.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
As we all leave.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. All right. We've gotten two items done, so we're moving right along. All right, let's go to item three D, which is approval of a proclamation recognizing Martha Patsy Brockett Wakefield Day in any appropriate action. And we have our friends from the Daughters of the American Revolution and I'd love to have y'all come forward here as a group. We have lots of individuals I want to introduce. And so we have the Regent-elect from the Flower Mound chapter is Samantha Barnes. And we have the Regent for the Benjamin Lyon chapter, Jill Johnson. And Regent of the Cross Timbers chapter, Judy Wood. And the Regent from the Shawnee Trail chapter, Patricia Strawmeyer. And the Regent Captain from the, uh, Regent Captain Molly Corbin chapter, Georgiana Brayden. And Regent from the Peters Colony chapter, Catherine Beck. And our Chair of the America Two Fifty Grave Marking Committee, Lisa Junkins. And from the Flower Mound chapter, we have Tanya Ibrajic, Donna Spears, and Barbara Doris. Good to see you, Barbara. And then from our Benjamin Lyon chapter, we have Jane Sanzon, Celeste Reynolds, Jennifer Searls. And from the Shawnee chapter, Michelle Valenci. And I think I, I got all those special acknowledgements there. So I want to thank you, uh, ladies for being here today. Do you want to have any opening comments before I read this proclamation?
Just a couple, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Judge Eads and Commissioners. The Daughters of the American Revolution have three pillars, historic preservation, education, and patriotism. And with that in mind, we were delighted when we realized we had an opportunity to honor the daughter of a patriot over in Chin Chapel Cemetery. A member of the Flower Mound chapter, Tanya Ibrajic, actually descends from what we refer to lovingly as Aunt Martha.
Yes.
And so with the upcoming anniversary of our great nation, the two hundred and fiftieth birthday, DAR has specifically been looking for ways to remind ourselves of what our patriots and their families did for this country.
Yes.
And so with that in mind, we have organized a grave marking this Saturday. It has brought six chapters together to work on this, um, in a unique opportunity to honor her. Not only is her father a patriot, her father-in-law is a patriot, and her father-in-law's dad was a patriot.
Oh, wow.
So a great family to recognize who did a lot in this county.
Yes, great. Oh, well, I, and I, I hate it, I have a scheduling conflict, I can't be in attendance. I know Peggy Riddle from our Office of History and Culture is going to be there, but this is a, it's a great celebratory moment. Is Commissioner Edmondson going to be there? Good, thank you. So I think this is, um, I want to, I want to thank the DAR for y'all's years of partnership with the county and, and our sharing records and being a real partner with our Office of History and Culture as we work to preserve cemeteries and, and, and other things across the county. And y'all have always just worked with us and I want to, I want to thank y'all for, uh, for that. Y'all have always had a real spirit of partnership and that's duly noted. So I want to thank y'all, I'm going to read this proclamation. So this is a court proclamation recognizing Martha Patsy Brockett Wakefield Day. And whereas the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, leads the nation in commemorating the men and women who achieved American independence, realizing that those patriots believed in the noble cause of liberty and served valiantly to found a new nation. And whereas the Flower Mound, Benjamin Lyon, Cross Timbers, Captain Molly Corbin, Peters Colony, and Shawnee Trail chapters, the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, have united to promote celebrating America's upcoming two hundred and fiftieth birthday and endeavor to recon, to convey its relevance to our society. And whereas Henry Wakefield Junior was the son of Revolutionary War Patriot Henry Wakefield, who was a son of Revolutionary War Patriot Charles Wakefield. And that Martha Patsy Brockett Wakefield was the daughter of a Revolutionary War Patriot, William Ebenezer Brockett. And whereas in eighteen fifty-three, Henry Wakefield Junior and his wife Martha Patsy Brockett Wakefield moved with their large family to Denton County, Texas. The town of Wakeston was named for their son Simpson Burke Wakefield. And Simpson, and Simpson's wife Jane was one of four women who founded Chin Chapel Methodist Church in Denton County. Whereas Martha Patsy Brockett Wakefield was a resident of Denton County for twenty years. And today, descendants of Simpson Burke Wake, Wakefield and his wife Jane reside in Denton County. And now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby recognize Saturday, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, as Martha Patsy Brockett Wakefield Day in Denton County and encourage all citizens to join in recognizing her pioneering spirit and impact on our community. Done in open court this twenty-third day of April, twenty twenty-four, upon a motion made by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? Well, I'm so excited that y'all are doing this and I can't wait to see all your upcoming, this weekend, and can't wait to see all your upcoming, um, events on the, uh, two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, you know, and, of Independence. And so, uh, anything that the county can do to help promote and celebrate and partner with you on those commemorative events, please let us know. We'd love to, we'd love to join with y'all, the DAR.
Thank you.
Any other comments? And then, um, and Commissioner Mitchell brought forward, uh, this morning from, uh, our State Representative, Kronta Timish. And she cannot be in attendance this weekend, but she has a resolution from the state of Texas as well. And so we want to, yes, so, so we want to, so you had the county and the state when you come to the county. And so we, uh, we want to be, uh, thank you, Commissioner Mitchell, uh, for bringing that in today. And so we want to, uh, be sure to give this to you today so y'all could have it for your, your celebration at the cemetery this weekend. Sound good? All right, we have a, a motion and a second, any other comments? Go right ahead.
Judge, I just wanted to, uh, tell you, I appreciate so much the use of the word patriot. I don't think we ever really stop and think about what is a patriot and where does it come from? Not long ago, my husband and I watched again a movie called The Patriot by, with Mel Gibson in it. And it's, it's just a very graphic and moving, uh, history of the way some of our people helped make our country independent. And I thought it was very ironic, of course, we were fighting the British and this happened to be shown on the BBC channel. But at any rate, it just, again, thank you all for keeping that spirit alive and for helping make the rest of us understand how very, very fortunate and blessed we are to live in this free country. Thank you and I'll see you all Saturday.
All right, any other comments?
Thank you for the work that you do and I'm, uh, we're honored to honor Ms. Wakefield for all that she's done and her family and you all just keep on doing. Thank you for making Denton County a better place to live, work, and play. Appreciate you.
And it's good to look forward, but also look back.
Yes.
And that's what I've always said about genealogy and having a true sense of appreciation of the sacrifices people made years ago to get us where we're at. So, yes, ma'am.
If it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be here.
If it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be here, that's right. That's exactly right, very well said. All right, any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, ladies.
You have, already working.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely, absolutely. I've spoken to their group before. Did you, did we do that together? Oh, we did that, I can't remember. Oh, yeah, we, that was a... We, we, we spoke to them, uh, at the Civic Center? Great, great group, loves to partner with us. I'm going to go back to the beginning, y'all, if it took, okay? I think we, we have left us, keep going in order. Members, let's go to our consent agenda. Are there any items you'd like to pull off the consent agenda to have a motion for approval as presented? We have a motion by Commissioner Falcone, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item two A, which is approval of order-making appointments. Item two B is approval of the interdepartmental transfers. Item two- Item 2C is approval of budgetman request 101280 for the Records Management Department to transfer $4,707 from technology software services to administrative equipment to purchase a water and ice dispenser for the Records Management staff. And item 2D is approval of payroll. Item 3A is approval of resolution recognizing Kerry Hicks' retirement and any appropriate action. And I hate it, Kerry couldn't be with us here today, but I am going to read his resolution. This is a resolution honoring Kerry Hicks for 17 years of dedicated service to Denton County. And the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, during a regular session on the 23rd day of April, 2024, considered the following resolution. Whereas Kerry Hicks has been a loyal employee with the Denton County Department of Transportation and Engineering since July the 12th, 2006, and retire on April the 25th, 2024, after over 17 years of service. Whereas Kerry was hired as a driver equipment operator and later promoted to driver equipment operator III. Whereas Kerry was a dedicated employee who provided a high level of quality and valuable service to the Denton, to the Department of Transportation and Engineering, and earned the respect of all who worked with him. Whereas Kerry's extraordinary work ethic, attention to detail, and devotion to assisting his coworkers were greatly appreciated by his fellow colleagues, and he'll be deeply missed. And whereas the Department of Transportation and Engineering would like to thank Kerry for his commitment and hard work throughout his career, and wish him well in his retirement. And now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby extend to Kerry Hicks our sincere and grateful appreciation for his dedicated service to Denton County. We congratulate Kerry on his well-earned retirement and extend our best wishes to him for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. Done in open court this 23rd day of April, 2024, upon a motion by the Chair, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? Well Kerry, I would like to say I'm sorry you're not here in person for, for me to say these to you directly, but I hope you can tune in and watch this. But I've been at the county 17 years too, and one of my great pleasures was working with our Roden Bridge West department all those years as a county commissioner. And that's, you started about the same time, and it was, I always enjoyed seeing you, and I appreciate your friendly smile and your spirit of teamwork that you always had out at Roden Bridge West and later with the Consolidated Roden Bridge Department. But I wish you all the best and enjoy your retirement and, and don't be a stranger. Any, any other comments?
Thank you for your service, Kerry.
Yes, absolutely.
And I second what the judge said about your friendly smile in, in Roden Bridge West. Congratulations on retiring and enjoy.
Yes. All right, any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We were not going to, we're going to hold item 3B members, we'll hold item 3, and we'll do that later, next month. Item 5A is approval of the bill report payments from CSUD Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT Interest, and DA forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May?
Thank you Judge, I have no changes today. Recommend approval as presented.
Perfect. We have a motion for approval as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer II, by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We will hold item 5B until a future date. We're going to hold item 5B for a future date. Next, let's go to item 6A, approval to dispose of miscellaneous furniture and office supplies in compliance with Chapter 263.152A3 of the Local Government Code for disposition of surplus. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell II, by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6B. Approval to declare miscellaneous office furniture and appliances surplus. Advertise in place an online auction 242810 to be held in April and May of 2024. Motion by Commissioner Williams II, by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6C. Approval to contract with Borman Cruise Vogel Group Incorporated, VBKV, for the juvenile detention structural analysis in the amount of $34,000.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell II, by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion?
Judge, just want to say that I'm glad we're getting this done. We probably, I believe that we're going to find that there's... We're obviously doing this because of some of the issues with the doors, with the structural, but I think we may find that there's other work there to be done, but I'm glad we're moving forward with that.
Perfect, good, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6D, approval of renewal of ITB 232747 printed materials to GPCTX LLC and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell II, by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is 6E. Approval of specifications and authority to advertise RFP 242811 medical laboratory services for jail and public health, and appointment of evaluation committee to include John Kissinger, Correctional Health Administrator, Joe Gallo, Public Health Division Manager, Disease Control and Prevention, and Dr. Marty Buchanan, Health Authority, and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson II, by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is 6F, approval of award of ITB 242801 Employee Appreciation Event to Circle R Ranch. Motion by Commissioner Williams II, by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is 6G. Approval of purchase of cement slurry, semitius, slurry services from Martin Marietta Materials Incorporated through the Tarrant County Cooperative Contract, F2024066. Cement slurry, semitius, slurry services in the estimated amount of $365,000 for the Department of Transportation and Engineering.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams II, by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6H. Approval of a change order for the Elements XS subscription purchased on May the 30th, 2023 from SHI Government Solutions, a reseller of Novo Fotex LLC through the Omnia Partners Cooperative Contract, 201801102, and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell II, by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is 6I. Approval of exemption from bidding for the sole source purchase of the addresser from ARC GIS Enterprise from Bradshaw Consulting Services Incorporated, the BCS, in the amount of $93,000. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell II, by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item 7A. Approval of budgetman request 101290 to increase revenues and allocate expenditures for salary, assistance benefits, and various operating line items for the Denton Independent School District School Resource Officer Contract in the amount of $122,288, any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Williams II, by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item 7B. Approval of budgetman request 101300 for the Juvenile Probation Department to transfer $32,774 from various salary and benefit line items from the Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program to the local post adjudication secure to cover the costs of transferring a juvenile supervision officer position slot 010- dash Y S, and any appropriate action.
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell II, by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item 7C. Approval of budgetman request 101310 to increase revenues and allocate expenditures for the salary, assistance benefit, and various operating line items for the Copper Canyon Interlocal Contract in the amount of $122,288.
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell II, by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item 8A. Report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Tony?
Good morning. We have two promotions in the county clerk's office, one new hire and the county treasurer. One demotion in the district attorney's office. One new hire in juvenile probation. One promotion and probate court number two. Three new hires in the sheriff's office, one rehire in the sheriff's office, and one promotion in the sheriff's office. And that does result in two new detention officer ones.
Perfect, good, thank you sir. That is presented for recording purposes only. Let's go to item 9A, approval of amendment number two to the Department of State Health Services Dishes Contract, HHS 00109820002, Vaccination Capacity Program Grant, any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion?
Judge, do you mind?
Yes.
So, and I think this is true, the next two as well, these are amendments for grants that we're, we're receiving or we, we may receive, that we have to have them open, but I think on this one, being some of the vaccination, we wouldn't necessarily be moving forward with any county funds for this if those grants don't come forward. So, just wanted to clarify that part.
Is that a statement or a question?
Well, I, I think it's a, I think that's what I understand from Dr. Richardson, so just want to make sure that that's...
Go right ahead. Dr. Richardson, did you want to speak to that? So much of our county health operations are funded by the state, and we appreciate their partnership. Go right ahead, sir.
We do, thank you. Judge Commissioners, so this 9A and 9B, the State Health Department has asked us to extend the grant periods, the, the grant contract dates. It's unknown whether the federal government, the CDC, will provide additional dollars, but they've asked us to extend the date so that we could expend all the current dollars, even if it went past the expiration. So this is really kind of a sequencing of contracts. It's, we're going to extend the dates, but no new money yet. If there is new money, it would be awarded by the state health department. If there's not new money, this grant, we would not continue, nor would we continue 9B with county funding. So, we would sunset these two grants as intended if there's no additional dollars, if that makes sense.
It's not really an operational change.
Right.
Right, it's kind of, it's an artifact, a contracting artifact.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to item 9B, approval of amendment number three to the Department of State Health Services Dishes Health Disparities Program Contract to reflect a revised termination date of May 31st, 2026. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell II, by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item 9C. Approval of the Health and Human Services Commission Family Planning Grant Amendment Number 7 Contract for September the 1st, 2023 through August 31st, 2024, to adjust the finding amounts allocated for, for state fiscal year 2024 in the amount of $12,236.
I move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell II, by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? Yes ma'am?
May I ask Dr. Richardson to come up again? I've had people ask me, so I just want to clarify. The family planning that is mentioned in this money does not include abortion services. Is that correct, Doctor?
I can answer that, yes, it does not.
It does not, thank you. This question comes up often. This is actually family planning activities to prevent its contraception services for women, underserved women. And in fact, this one we're proud of, annually, we do so well with our expenditures and our metrics that we submit to the state. We sometimes get a little extra credit. This is that extra credit. Other contractors around the state don't always expend their funds. And so about at the halfway point, we sometimes, in the last few years, almost every year, get additional dollars from other contractors that are going to go unexpended, if that makes sense. We get a little, we get a little bonus because we do such a good job efficiently and effectively getting those grant dollars to the community. So, we get a little, got a little bit of a raise.
Perfect, good, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item 12A. Approval of the 2024-2025 Interlocal Agreements for Shared Governance Communications and Dispatch Services System for the Pilot Point ISD Police Department.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams II, by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is 13A, approval of the request to submit a grant application to the US Department of Justice, the Bureau of Justice Assistance Adult Treatment Court Program for the amount of $987,269 for four years of funding, and any appropriate action.
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell II, by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is 14A. Approval of one, to rescind previously approved agreement documents between Denton County, Texas and Can-Am Technologies Incorporated, quarter number 240302, signed on April the 9th, 2024. And two, to replace with action with adoption and approval of the agreement documents between Denton County, Texas and Can-Am Technologies Incorporated for RFP 222690, software services in the amount of $85,320 for the first year and $147,260 for implementation for a total of $232,580 to come from order line item 5466611086, and any appropriate action.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson II, by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is 14B. Approval of supplemental agreement number one to the easement agreement for the NTTA toll bridge in precinct one, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams II, by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is 14C. Approval of First Amendment to Addendum Number Three to the Master Agreement for Professional Engineering Services between Denton County, Texas, the Owner and Half Associates Incorporated for MEP Services. This is miscellaneous facilities RFQ 222679. Pardon me? For the conversion of the Teasley Storage Facility Fire Suppression System to a dry system in the amount of $59,750 plus reimbursable expenses not to exceed $1,000. With funding to come from order line item 8053809010 as recommended by the Denton County Purchasing Director. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson II, by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, next, let's go to item 17. This is community updates. Local updates from the Commissioners Court members. We'll start with Commissioner Precinct One.
Thank you Judge. Couple big congratulations. First to the Sanger Lady Indian Softball Team for the 2024 district champions, and they're headed to playoffs against Springtown. So that's exciting. And then the others, congratulations to the, for a Aubrey Lady Chaparral softball team. They're the 2024 district champions, and they're headed to the playoffs against Dallas Wilmer Hutchinson. So, congratulations ladies and good luck in the playoffs. That's it Judge.
Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Falconer?
Yes, thank you Judge. So, we've got a few things going on next week. At the Colony, there's the Up Up and Away Festival of Flight, and that's on the 27th from 3 to 7 at Presswick Elementary School. Little Elm's got in the Farmer's Market at the Lawn on the 27th at the Lawn. That's 10 to 2. And Frisco has woven together the Sorry Wrap-Up, and that's the 27th, 1 to 2 at the Frisco Heritage Center. Several events in Carrollton, starting the Star Party at the Perry Museum on the 25th from 8 to 10 p.m. Sounds on the Square on the 26th and then downtown Carrollton. And then the, the very important Carrollton Trails 5K and 1 Mile Fun Run. And that is on the 27th at 8 a.m. And that will be on the Blue Trail. You start, you can park at Creekview High School. And then the shredding event on the 27th later that day at Holy Covenant United Methodist Church. That's what I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell?
I have in Copper Canyon, we're having a lot of shred days. It's Town Hall, April 27th, 8 a.m. to 12 p.m. We have in Flower Mountain, Keep Flower Mountain Beautiful, also April 27th, 8:30 a.m. to 1 p.m. At Flower Mountain High School. National Prescription Drug Takeback at Flower Mountain, April 27th, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at Flower Mountain High School. Also at Marcus, National Prescription Drug Takeback Day. 10 to 2, Flower Mountain High School. Hickory Creek is having a park cleanup, April 27th at 9 a.m. And we're having a farewell reception this evening from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. For Mayor Dan Jawoski at the Holland Village City Council. Lake Dallas, 7 to 8 days, Farmer's Market, April 27th, 8 a.m. to noon. A chance to swim, adapted swim at Lewisville. Thrive Swim for those with physical, visual, or intellectual impairments. This is a free program. Acoustic jam session, it's going to be April 26th at 6 p.m. National Prescription Drug Takeback Day at Louisville High School, April 27th, 11 a.m. to 2. Free vision screening, April 29th, 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. And Communities and Schools is having their gala, gala on Saturday night. So please come out and let's celebrate.
Perfect, Commissioner. Thank you. Commissioner Edmondson?
Well, the first one I have is for Denton, and I'm not sure I know, know what this is. It says kayaking. And it's going to be at the rec center, so I don't think it's- It says kayaking, uh, and it's gonna be at the Rec Center, so I don't think it's real kayaking, but whatever kayaking is, they're gonna have that on the 27th. It says open to all skill levels and bring a sack lunch and water and enjoy a picnic. Uh, then in Haslip, there's more, uh, puppies involved in the Reading to Rover, and that's gonna be on the 24th, April 24th, from 4 to 5. Justin Fun Days is right around the corner, April 27th in the community park. This is a family-friendly day, so be sure to come. They'll have a rodeo, balloon artist, et cetera. And then, uh, in Roanoke, they're continuing their evenings on Oak Street Concert Series. Trophyr Club is having a community hazardous waste cleanup on the 27th. And I've saved this one for last, 'cause it sounds like the most fun. It's Land Hannah, Purses and Pearls, Whiskey and Wallets, and it's gonna be at the Courtyard by Marriott on the River Rock, Riverwalk. It is benefiting Journey to Dream, Silent Auction, Live Auction Dinner, and more. So pearls and purses, whiskeys and wallets.
Thank you each for your updates. I wanted to mention something, that it's an annual tradition here in North Texas, and especially in Denton County, is our Medal of Honor Program that happens up in Gainesville. And so this is really neat, and everyone can be a part. The, um, the different Medal of Honor recipients fly in from all over the U.S. to DFW Airport, and then they're gathered together in a, in a, uh, in a bus, and they are led with a, hundreds of emergency vehicles and hundreds of motorcycles, right, Jody? And Eric, we've done it many times together. And they leave DFW, and they proceed, um, up at 114 to, uh, 183 to 360, and then up 114 all the way through Denton County, up to, uh, 35W, and all the way up 35W northbound to 35, and it could continue up to Gainesville. And so it is a wonderful opportunity for people to go and express your patriotism and appreciation for these individuals who received the Medal of Honor. And so, uh, it's great, and all the intersections are, are, um, flanked with flags and individuals waving flags and, and, um, having a, saluting, um, these individuals. And so it's great, as these people come in on an annual basis, um, they get to see a, a Texas welcome and a Denton County welcome as they go from one end of the county to another. And so the overpasses are, are staffed with fire trucks and flags, and it's truly a, a very moving event, uh, to be in the motorcade and, and also to, to be there, um, welcoming the motorcade. So I just wanna encourage everybody. It's roughly between 3 to, 3:00 and 5:00. We will do some, you can watch the Denton County Facebook page, and we'll send some live updates if I, when, when it's beginning and when it's rolling out, and so, so people can know. Uh, sometimes we're waiting on an airplane, you know, for one of the honorees. We're waiting for an airplane, we're connecting flight, and so it's not a, um, it, it's not as precise as, they very, they try very hard to make it precise, but sometimes you're, the airlines are out of our, our control, so, uh, so we don't have an exact start time. So it's why everybody apply grace to the situation. Yes, Commissioner?
Judge, I'd like to invite everybody over to 35W, because that's where we'll have the best chance of seeing and showing our patriotism. Bring flags to wave, horns to honk. It's a wonderful patriotic event, and thank you for.
Yeah. It's a great, it's a great event.
I need one more.
Commissioner Mitchell?
The Lewisville Area Chamber of Commerce is having their annual awards gala on Friday the 3rd from 6 to 10 at Wayne Ferguson Plaza. So come out and enjoy cheeseburger and Jimmy Buffett and a Paradise theme. So come out and enjoy.
I know, it's, it's fun. It's outdoor banquet. I like it. All right. Any other comments? It is this Thursday. It is this, thank you. It is this, it is this Thursday afternoon. It is this Thursday, so I want y'all to, to know about it. It's April, Thursday, April 25th. So we sent out a special alert about it yesterday, and we'll, we'll put some updates out on the Denton County Facebook page. All right. Any other comments? All right. Let's go to executive session. It is, I have a couple items.